All right, I'll call to order the town of Mano deserve planning board meeting for June 12th, 2024. Welcome aboard. So we are still obviously on Zoom and in person and you know, address both. But let's first start with some introductions on the chairman, William Hanley. We've got the vice chair, Tracy Loftus Keller. We've got Gail Marshall and Alan Kimerly. We're all active voting board members. And we've got alternate and Dalton with us tonight, too. And I think the first thing where we're not Meredith is here and she's the other voting member of the board. We probably should vote Anne as the building number.
So moved second.
All those in favor. Hi. Welcome aboard, Anne. And if Meredith suddenly shows up and she's an alternate tonight. What else out at hopefully by now we all know how to handle Zoom protocol. And if you are online, it doesn't look like there's too many of us out there in Zoom world. Just please sign in on chat. It just helps with the record keeping of it all. And just please remember the meeting is being recorded. So let's first talk about just the agenda tonight. And I wanted to make a suggestion if the applicant is okay with this is that we take we take the agenda out of order. And we take we take item three D before three A, B, and C. And with the applicant for three A, B, and C have have any objection to that? Yeah, and it's a it's a fast so hopefully should be pretty straightforward. But with any anybody on board like to make
Tracy Keller, second.
All right, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? All right. So and but before that, we've got some approval of minutes. We've got the minutes from May 22nd to approve. And any comments on the May 22nd minutes?
I'm of approval.
Second, there you go. All right. All those in favor? I opposed. May 22nd minutes taken care of. All right, we're moving right along here. So we are going to jump from item two to item three D. And item three D tonight is a conditional use approval application. It's numbers oh, oh, six, 2024. Owner is Dodge Point LLC. Owner is Dodge Point LLC agent is Tim Brochu from Haley Ward. Location is 29 Dodge Point Road Seal Harbor. Map tax map oh, oh, one lot 17 zone is shoreline residential two and the purpose is section 6B eight fences and walls. And they're proposing an eight foot high by they're proposing the eight foot high by 250 foot in length, solid fence. And we had a site inspection at four thirty. It was this one advertised and the butter is notified.
There were six butters notified by letter of the May 31st. And it was also advertised on. I think that says three thirty first. That's very hard. So
I don't think
I think it's 31st in the mountain islander and Ellsworth American.
All right. Okay, we had a site, a site meeting at four thirty and perhaps Alan. Would you care to report on our observations from the site meeting?
There was an awful lot of construction going on. Big, big dump trucks coming in and out, loading pretty substantial rubber rubble. And I guess I could understand how the neighbors would like to shield a little bit of the construction, which we were told will probably be going on for at least two years. It's pretty substantial projects they're having there. I think three buildings are put in. And so they're requesting the eight foot solid fence, which I can understand that. And if we were told that it will be removed and plantings put in once they are done with said construction.
All right, anybody like to add anything to Alan's comments on the site meeting? Gail?
No.
All right. Tim, I'm going to turn it over to you. I would ask that you come up to the front row though, so our owl can pick you up and hear you. Yeah, so perhaps just start us off with a project introduction and we'll get into it.
Yeah, sure. Fairly straightforward project, ongoing construction at sites, pre residential buildings. Substantial amount of earth work involved with it. Results that is going to be going on for couple of years. The immediate of butter is a residential property that has a lot of summer use and summer parties and functions and things. And they asked the owner of this project if we could install a relatively attractive solid wood fence, maybe three of them from all of our construction, which is the application for you tonight. It will only be up during the construction, probably within 18 months or so. We had a point where we'll take it down and the entire area be landscape with trees and shrubs and vegetation.
All right, any questions for applicant? I'll open up the public comment for the application to if the public has any questions. Going once. Twice. No public comment. All right, I'll close public comment and yes, how about when anybody first? Well, let's first have a motion to find the application complete.
Oh, I'll make the motion to find application complete.
And got it. All right, all those in favor? I opposed. Then perhaps another motion, someone will care to consider.
Care to make the motion to use the short form.
Checklist.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor of using the short form checklist? I All right, let's do this. And then we got this weird little procedural thing. Anybody care to make a motion to approve the application?
I move to approve the application.
I'll shut it down. Then we press the pause button and we go through the review of the application. And I've never understood that, but here we are. Yes, so I'm sure that's in our manual somewhere deep down in there. And after 10 years of doing that, still confounds me. But all right, I've got the short form checklist in front of me. I've got the application as well. Everybody should have the application in front of them, too, and the land use ordinance. And let's go through this. So we're going through section six, A, B, and C of the of the land use ordinance and and then also section five nine. So let's do it. So all right, section six A. Or is about general performance standards and six A one compatibility. So applicant talks about that. It's a temporary fence. It's constructive of wood and it's going to weather to gray shade. You know, it's not located close proximity to any existing structure and the density of development. It doesn't affect the development. So the application erosion and sedimentation control. Applicant says N A. Six A three highway safety applicant says N A. Impact on town services, N A. Land suitability. Applicant says N A. Lighting, there's no lighting and a stormwater or wait. So lighting outdoor in a six A seven stormwater. It's not affecting it. So N A six A eight vegetation. There's no vegetation being removed. And a and dust, fumes, vapors, odors and gases. And a so the findings of fact are presented by the applicant and attached application. And the conclusion law is that proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A, for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor? I opposed. There is section six A. So section six B. I would wager is all N A except for one section. So bear with me. Six B one agriculture, N A six B two air landing sites, N A six B seven excavation, N A. And the reason we're here tonight, section six B eight fences and walls. And Tim, if I'm looking at the right page, your the your submittal says N A.
Carried away with N A's.
Yeah. Your would you care? You're probably going to have to amend the the record submission here. And I would wager it would be amended to applicable standard met. So we're going to say six B eight C application. So you you gotta change that. And then the rest sign regulations, N A wireless communications facilities, N A animal husbandry two, N A mobile food vendors, N A grooming house, N A hotels and motels, N A. Some findings of fact that the proposed use include none of the specific activities, land uses described in section six B, except for section six B eight. In the conclusion law, section six B is not applicable, except for section six B eight, for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
Okay, all right, all those in favor? I opposed. Right on the section six C. Then what zone are you guys in again? Yeah, yeah, S R two. So what section sexy is about or is the shoreline zoning standard reviewed by the planning board? So get the section C in the application. Okay. Section sixty one agriculture and animal husbandry, N A. Sixty two archaeological sites. You say N A. Do they need a letter from the state, Kim?
No, it's not in an archaeological site.
So
Cross road on the other lot.
Got it. So N A sixty five essential services, that's N A. Parking area, section sixty six. N A sixty seven, you're not building a pier. So N A sixty nine roads and driveways, not doing that either. And a and sixty eleven water quality. You say N A. So section sixty that the findings of fact or proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section sixty. And the conclusion of laws that section C is not applicable.
So moved.
So I guess all those in favor? I opposed. Right, because we are in S R two, we we have to do section five point nine. These are additional shoreline review standards, sure, sure. Sure, yes, shoreline review standards. So let's do it. So section five nine, section five nine one will maintain safe and healthful conditions. Uh, Tim, you got went crazy with the N A's here. So I would advise the applicant that section five nine one should be changed to see application. Not N A for its safe and healthful conditions. So you should change that with Tim. Uh, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. And you say N A again.
That's a little confusing on whether that application of the what we're building is causing that or
Yeah, it is. I would say the application would appear to be more in the affirmative that you're not, you know, creating any of these conditions if you just said see application as to N A.
Sure.
So I'm going to say five nine two C application and you gotta change. I would, well, you're gonna have to change that. And just the the majority of applications we receive, even for fences in the shoreline zone, they're typically saying see application and not N A for section five nine. So five nine three will adversely will adequately provide for the disposal of all waste. I would say that is N A. It's just a fence. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, water, light, bird, or other wildlife habitat. You should see application. Five nine five will serve shore covering visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. And a you're not out in the water. Five nine six will protect archaeological and historic resources designated a comp plan. You're not in that zone. So
He did say see application on five nine five.
He did say Yes, let's put N A for that excellent catch. All right, but five nine six. Right, is N A because he's not in that zone. Five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. And a you're not in a shoreline commercial district. Uh, five nine eight will avoid problems associated with the flood flood plain. And there you do say see application. And five nine nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, six B, six C. And you say N A. So I'm going to select standard met. So all right. The findings of fact are see above and the conclusion law is that all requirements of sections five nine have been met.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor? Right permit conditions, any permit conditions on this, Kim? You don't have it. And then we circle back to our eight track player and press play on the vote to approve. All those in favor of approving the application? I opposed. Congrats.
That's that's why.
That's why we give rights. I can't figure that. It just seems all so All right, now we're going to circle back to item three A. And we have another conditional use approval application. Yeah, conditional use approval application oh, oh, three, twenty twenty four. Owner is Astacoo Hospitality LLC agent is Greg Johnson from P F Johnson Associates. Location is fifteen Peabody Drive Northeast Harbor Tax Map five lot fourteen dash oh, oh, one zone village residential three two hundred and fifty foot shoreline zone buffer overlay and shoreline residential two. Purpose is section three point four hotel motel. The proposal is to construct fifteen new guest suites, eighteen new guest rooms, a new swimming pool, spa and fitness area. New driveway parking areas and walkways. We had a site inspection at five o'clock and we're a butters notified and this one advertised.
Yes, there are nine, all the all the butters, nine of them were notified by letter dated May 30th. And it was also advertised in the Ellsworth American and Non Desert Islander on it looks like April 25th and May there it's like May, May 30th. Really small.
That looks like May 31st.
Okay, well, I mean, I just can't see it.
Thirty first.
Thirty first, okay. All right, but yeah.
Okay. All right. Gail, would you care to report on our site inspection at five o'clock today?
Well, some obviously from your description, it's a multifaceted project that the renovation of the image shop is already underway. And that is a separate process through or maybe have you guys had that? Did you guys have that previously? In any event, that's a separate part of the process. So this is the new construction and the reconfiguration of the site itself. So we've shown where the parking area is going to be moved. And the request is part of that will come part of the discussion here about moving the parking area 10 feet further away from the stream that's nearby to fifty feet, not something five feet. And that would be something that kind of we're discussing. Um, we would have shown where the buildings that the the individual cottages are going to be, they've got they've got those staked out, they've got the roads, the future roads marked out. We were shown where the sign, the pool is going to be and how that's going to be configured in the landscape so that it's recessed and and how the the units, the additional units are going to be underneath the pool and also further below that on the grade, there'll be another set of units that will be landscape on top. We talked about the fact that there won't be large events happening there as has previously been the case that there won't be tennis courts. Um, there was some discussion among individual by individuals attending about shoreline issues. May hear that again at this hearing. Uh, but generally speaking, it's 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 an obviously an extensive project.
Alan, anything to add to that?
I I concur. It's a it's quite a big project. Looks like it's going to be probably going on for quite a while. It looks like it'll be a nice addition. It's there was a talk that it's going to be open to the public. And there's a a minor possibility if they can do it, that it could be around.
Tracy, any observations?
I know it was lovely to get on that property and walk around and um, see how the what the layout's going to be and and the view, which I don't usually see from the road. So no, I don't really have anything to add. Very nice property.
Thanks for reporting on that. Before we get into it, though, I've got a procedural question. First thing is, why do we have three different applications?
Dan can answer that or Greg.
Yeah, Dan or Greg, we care to
Maybe get into it and part of the presentation. First, I just wanted to use Greg Johnson, the engineer representative with me is Steve Doe, the landscape architect. You know, his project manager, Tony Arino is here to help discuss logistics. I also want to put on Diane Morbeau, Sewell Traffic Engineer is online to help discuss a lot of the things that occur in the orders. I did want to take just a moment to spread out some of the remains and stuff because it's a little tough up here for people in the in the audience to see what it is. So if I could do that for a moment, just pause briefly, let me spread a few things out.
That makes sense. Why don't you just kind of put the project into context and let's circle back to just the procedural question?
Yep, I do want to make sure that I think we can plan to have.
And would it be crazy if we could uh, open one of the windows and maybe two other windows?
Before we get too into the description, I just wanted to set these off to the side. These are two renderings which the letting board have on on this one here on the top, you'll see a view looking westerly past the end. Bottom one is eastward, everything through the end past where the country near near time. Uh, in this rendering is a going back from the deck of the new in itself. And then here's a rendering that the board from the water side. So I will set these up here. The plane would have these. And so one of the boards, I want to make sure you guys see that. So initially, in the purchase of the owner of purchased property, one contiguous deed, it encompassed at least three tax map lots. We made application in the ordinance definition of land use defined parcel is contiguous lots described in the deed. Realizing there were still separate tax map parcels, conversed with Kim and their counsel. And we provided a conveyance that combined them. When they acquired, they their intention was to go on the same deed, but we had instrumental change to clarify that. And that was the second submittal you had those parcels, which you can see here. This parcel in the middle, which is fourteen oh four, we call I call it your lot. That is one of the parcels. That is one of the parcels. Um the other parcel is um the main in property. Which contains not only the main in, but separated by another parcel, which is the land and garden parcel, but contains this. We'll call it the conservation piece, which is six acres. On the Route ninety uh on any interest of town. That's not part of the development um product. There's there's nothing happening there. It's in conservation and it's to be managed by the. Grantee and how it has been. Um this is parcel three, six, three. That was also conveyed in the same deed. When we made application, they uh the deed had them together. We further clarified that with a combination conveyance that combined all these and partly being a. This lot's nonconforming in the district. This lot's nonconforming in the district. And so size wise and what they they mean to the parcel was that they really should just be combined, so we don't have to deal with. Individual pieces, the nonconformities each, and so that this. Here uh is is the core of the project scope, and they were advertised separately because when we made application, it was prior to them combining them.
So as it stands today, we have one contiguous lot.
Yes.
And based upon just how it was structured and and in the agenda and advertised. It was just the the same project on three different lots. So it was the three, the three applications here weren't broken into like the. You know, like the pool structure or the the gas cottages or anything else. I mean, they they were all the same project in the. But you guys had to do it three times because they had three lots.
Yeah, uh the indifference that was fact that either one of those parcels is going to operate as as part of the Yerks. Um there's a rental cottage with two screws and there's a uh perfect building, and so. They're all part of their operations and we just melded in which. For tax purposes and clarification, that happened again after the application and then we're here today.
So we had technically, we have one lot. And three applications for the same lot at the moment.
I think you have one lot and one application.
Right, well, that's what I was gonna get to next, and so um. I wanted to get first get the board's opinion about um reviewing this as one. Application. I just don't understand why we would do it as three now, now that the lot has been combined and. The original application wasn't broken into different components of review. It was the same thing through repeated. Three times. So.
Correct. And we have a copy of the release date, which is dated the third of June.
Just to point out to the board, uh Daniel Blagie um for those advocate, just to point out to the board, these. Parcels that have been separate tax map and lot numbers have been combined uh in in one ownership. On one deed since nineteen eighty-two or something with that. Um but to clarify the application for you, that's one application and one development.
Any thoughts, guys, on doing this as one singular application instead of?
Very logical.
With no prohibition against that, is it, Ken?
Is there any? So anybody care to make a motion on that?
I would consider this as one application.
No, second to.
Right, any further discussion, right? All those in favor? Oppose? We're gonna review this once as one application. So. Here we are. So we've reported on the site inspection. We just agreed we're gonna review this once. Um I want to clarify too that this is a conditional use application. I had some inquiries to me about, you know, what's the process we go through here? This is not a subdivision where we're doing, and the subdivision process is a. Is a multi-meeting, multi-tiered. Um review process where we commonly have the sketch plan review and then we have completeness. And then we have a public hearing and then we have compliance review and so it's. That's not what we're doing here. This is a conditional use application review and and you know, and and it could be easily. Reference to what we just went through with the fence. We're going through section six, A, B, and C. In section five point nine of the land use ordinance, because it's in the shoreline zone, so we've got um. Um we're we're we've got our checklist to follow through and we've got the the review criteria, the land use ordinance sections there to. Um you know, review it again, so every everybody clear on that coming out of the gate. Uh so conditional use application. And with that, um Greg, I'll turn it back to you if you want to continue on any um.
Sure.
Project introduction.
So um the this this right side up here. The scope of the project is really the um construction of two buildings, which are tiered on the lawn of the project. In front of the existing inn. Um the first building has a um is is sunk down, has a pool terrace. And green space on top of it. Um well, pool terrace. Um below that is nine guest rooms. Then terrace down below that in front of those units is a is a green room. And below that uh are nine additional units. Um and if you recall, the site, as if we walked and we had stayed in the field. Um fifteen small um cottages, those are about seven hundred square feet, twenty by thirty each. Through that, we reconfigured the entrance. Uh the entrance to the project um mainly for our parking is um. The the um the the center entrance. Um we've eliminated one entrance um as we discussed. And the entrance and drop off here is just one way. It's one way into drop off. And guests can continue into the parking. On this side, we have the um sort of the the main traffic repeated in part. Deliveries uh can back in behind this uh screen buffer to serve the main in. Um without circulating throughout the um throughout the end. Uh these two lower buildings, which we also did talk about are for access only. Um we did talk about um with the parking areas, we're we're implementing. Uh low impact development, saying it's previous pavement uh to reduce a sort of runoff and capture it and treat it. And and each one of the cottages has sort of its individual landscape buffering. Um now maybe Steve, you can talk a little bit about the landscaping, we can get into the nuts and bolts of the other stuff.
Yes, so the way we're looking at this from a landscape perspective, um. There's there's really like two components I see to the project. You got the inn and the the suites down below. And then you got the cottages. So the main inn, you know, being a grand building, we're we're proposing more of a grand. Uh landscape plan and visuals that complement the inn. So if you remember the old layout, it was it was very, you couldn't see the inn. It was very screened from all the old locations, so we're. We're opening up views into the inn, so you really see this grand entrance to it. Uh we've maintained the the large trees that are out there. Some have come down due to storm damage, but they're just. Uh for health, uh broken up. Uh this is where the parking lot was, so there's a nice standard trees there. That will be. Um enhanced and provide a buffer for the parking lots, and we're gonna screen that parking lot. Uh as best we can from the main entrance. But anyway, again, enhanced landscape for the front entrance. The back again will be enhanced with a lot of um. I would call more of a classical. Landscape that's appropriate to the inn. Um as you start moving down towards the slopes of the the harbor, the landscape's gonna take more of a a natural name. Um look to it, more meadows, more native plants. And then the cottages themselves is also going to be more of a a native landscape um. More of a meadow and more native versus more of a, I would say, a formal landscape. A lot of plantings around the cottages themselves. If you remember the large lawn area, we're keeping the lawn as more of a focal point. Um where the cottages are placed around that, um and all looking out towards the water. Um we also have a lot of buffering around the parking lots, so that is also screened from the road. And internally from looking back up from the cottages or from the waterfront.
So in thinking about this as like a project of two parts, kind of the terrace. Um pool area suites that are technically below grade. Um and then we have the cottages. Could you talk about the and the two structure types? For the record, and you know, what what are they? I mean, what, you know?
So the do I guess I can go ahead. So the um. The two um suites buildings are are built out of concrete, so there'll be concrete. Um walls, floor, ceiling. Um so that we could have. Um the vegetation and terracing on the move, so those.
And the pool, the pool is on top of the upper terrace. Below grade suites.
So the suites, so the pool is if you, this is a rectangle, so the pool is a rectangle in the middle of that. The suites are in front of that. So the suites are on the um. I was actually to draw the border on this. So yeah, so the pool sits right there.
Mm hmm.
And so the suites are. In the front here. And then the spa is this corner there. This is uh mechanicals and storage there. And then the the lower building is just all suites, so this this block here is equal to that block.
Yeah.
Yeah, landscape plan. L three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so these units all look out. Towards the water, these look out towards the water.
And what are those units? Are they just like a typical one-room suite and there's?
Um.
Yeah, so there's on tab thirteen might help a little bit. Yeah, there are there are one-room. Um they actually have, they're almost like a spa. They actually have a spot and you could actually have a. Treatment spa treatment. Yeah, it's got a small, it's sort of combined um. Bed, single bed and living space and separate sort of like a master bathroom.
Yeah.
And they're.
So just making sure, you know, and and again, I'm asking for um just clarity of for the public record. You know, we're looking at tab thirteen in the application and um. And what they have in path thirteen are the architectural drawings, just showing floor plans and elevations of the of the terrace structure. So just want to make sure that the um. You know, the public understands what this unique structure is and what where it is on the site.
I think if you uh do recall, part of that paring thing is is. Not only to create the green space, which you can see from the inn, but we all it's it's pretty steep from the existing inn, which had a deck on. Down down to the water, which was the this sort of garden and ceremonial area where uh to travel, that makes perfect sense. Because a very short period of time, there's two steps of twelve feet, twenty four feet. And so in that distance, you can have. And another room um basically inside the apartment.
So when you're up in in the old. Hotel, l- looking down, you're you're not seeing this other than right on the renderings.
They were shown that to the public.
Yeah, you're not seeing these structures. You're seeing the really essentially just the pool deck.
Yeah, so this rendering here, this is if you're standing, and if you remember the inn where the where the deck is, this view is taken from the deck. Uh and so this would be the pool deck. That's down here, so you can see the pool, the building. And then below that, which you can barely see, is the second. Uh suites down there. So it's really, you're you're looking at almost as like. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Tab thirteen, if you're like a bird, tab thirteen.
Tab thirteen.
Way in the back.
So so that that's one structure. Then can you talk about the other structures, the cottages?
Yeah, sure. Structure, because I'm a little bit confused. If I look at the the uh. Rendering that you've sent us, you can't read from the shore and the water. You can't really see those those buildings.
No.
Is that what you're intending?
Yeah, you'll see through the, they'll see through the trees, but you don't see them.
Thank you.
And another thing you had said. That on the curve of the road, you're gonna keep a low vegetation. Or yeah, with sheet carpet going around there, coming in the one way. Yeah, the power company started clearing and that fence and the brush has has come out of the landing base. They wanted lower flanking and they're now there. And I I think it's also in um on task thirteen, there is a a section which probably. Describes further how they situate and I don't mind it. Um it fills in the eyes, one would see the section through the. The two buildings and how they relate to the inn and and when you're having a foreground or floats the water, you you still see the inn, because all these are below. Um the inn, so hopefully that sort of helps toward trying to describe how they're embedded.
You know a lot of that.
Yeah, so. So the board. You guys are clear on the first structure going in, so it sounds like so. Let's let's hear about the second structure and the the cottage.
Okay, so then the um. As I said, there's like two sections. You got the inn with the the sweets. The cottages are um. Clustered kind of village setting. Uh we have um Greg has some plans in the in the application of these.
And that's tab thirteen.
Yeah.
And there are images in ten.
Yeah.
And those are two bedroom units. Again, to look more like vernacular that you have in the village. Porches, you know, gable ends, um shed portions of it, very typical of this area.
So there 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 are two bedroom cottages. One bathroom and each one has a. Two bathrooms. My bad, and um. And there's also a separate parking spot pullout for each one.
Correct.
Yep.
Most of them have their own parking. Um these four on the upper end do not have their own parking in front. They will park in the lot behind them. Um but all the other cottages around. They have parking at their cottage.
And those parking spaces are included in your calculation of the total number of parking spaces you provide.
Correct.
Are these year-round cottages? On page fourteen, pad fourteen, it says they're seasonal pattern.
Yeah, it's like, cottages are seasonal. I think the impression you talked about over the India would be over here now, but the cottages are.
Yeah. So we're just about through the introduction here and then we're gonna open up, open it up through for public comments. So just trying to get the context of the of the project here. So.
And those the the those those small cottages are approximately twenty tall um. Twenty by thirty um with the deck space, about seven hundred square feet.
Okay, there's uh no upstairs.
It's getting difficult to hear and it's gonna be even worse on that recording, so. I don't mean to say everyone be quiet, but if we could all just be mindful.
I agree, Heidi. Thank you.
I may need that recording here.
Mm hmm. Alan, you had a question?
It's just uh the cottages are just one story. There's no loft area.
Looks like there is.
No, they're all, they're all one-story, um, no lots of this.
What's that dormer on the second?
That's terrible.
So, see, in, in that regard, next to the back bedroom, is there like a, some sort of. I can't tell what that is. It looks like there's a ladder on the wall or something. Because I, I remember reading the reference to a, some sort of loft or extra sleeping.
I was saying corrected. I was looking for the staircase in this, but there is a uh.
Yeah, I mean, we're still working through the, you know, the final design, the interior, so there's been a lot of discussion between us and the architects. I mean, that's everything, so.
Now, there's two beds and these plans do show with an attic space, right? And it says, it says attic with.
So before we get into the particulars of the application review, I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, the. Everybody's under, understanding the context of the project here and. Does the board feel like they understand the context of the project? All right, anything else for the introduction of the project? All right, well then, I'm, I'm gonna, I guess we should first. Vote at the application. Well, no, let's, let's open up, open it up for public comment and get into it. So um, any questions of that applicant from the public ask away, ma'am?
Um, so as I, I was here. I'm Catherine Nera. Um, I was here for at least two of the pretty humongous storms that were, that happened this January. I was just wondering if there was any measure of where the waves actually came up to, because one of those cottages looks pretty kind of close down to the, the water level. Uh, I would be worried about how the storms are getting worse and worse and eventually that thing is gonna be getting hit with water every time we get a big storm in winter.
Greg?
The lowest cottage is forty-four feet above the main high water. So uh, those contours are in seventeen up there, so none of them are down by the water. And mean water being zero, it's forty-four feet above that.
I have a question relative to that. Question is, where is the seventy-five foot step back on the site? And the site seventy-five foot setback I'm referring to is from the, the uh, highest annual tide setback.
That's on there, it's basically probably thirty feet, this probably closest spot where eighty, eighty-five feet. So, yeah, not right against the.
And, and the unlabeled line further up that kind of bisects the whole prod, project, um, east, west. I assume. Yeah, I assume that's the two hundred and fifty foot.
It's been back, yeah, for the Russian here being.
This is the two fifty.
This one's at two fifty. Is that the one you were talking about right there?
That guy, yeah.
Yeah, that's two fifty.
Looking at once the storm's happening, right, where that, the line of the water gone up to you on the property.
Okay, so uh, back to our question, we do know where the work ran out to because we surveyed all the elevation degree marks. And that elevation got into around elevation eleven. And again, these.
Speak up too. Yeah.
Yeah, so the um, the, the tide surge is here, got to basically elevation eleven. A lot of the areas, the flood zone is actually fourteen in these, so it wasn't quite up even to the flood zone. And the lowest conitere is set around elevation forty-four compared to the eleven stories. Thirty that we had in January and December.
If, if you've seen the site and you know what the lawn is, that all the cottages are up there. If not even further back from that one. So there's nothing down by the water. If you look at the top drawing, on the left. Um, that's a view from the water and you can see the cottages on the left-hand side of that. So they're, they're way up there.
Uh, Rick had his hand up.
Yeah, I, I think this is the appropriate time to talk about this subject. My name is Rick Savage. I like the rendering here very much, but I wish the actual photographs looked like that. I uh, was at the site uh, visit today and uh, the erosion. Is a huge issue on my mind. I actually took the photographs, I think uh, maybe fourteen, I sent them to Kim. I, I don't know how to share them with my phone. I'm lucky I can take the photographs. But uh, I documented some severe erosion already on that waterfront. It's not ledge, it's soft soil. The land has fallen down in two particular places. I don't know, you, could you show those photographs on the screen, Kim? Is it possible? Well, I even uh, was concerned enough giving water. I did the site visit on land. But before I came to the meeting, I went up by boat. And uh, fortunately, the tide was high enough so I could get real close. Uh, in my mind, it doesn't matter how high above the waterfront, these other cottages are. The forty feet shore, but the real problem is that the waterline. And the high tide is eroding already. And look, and the existing bushes that are on the land, a bunch of olives and a bunch of other things. Have already slopped off in two particular places. I'm not making this up. You can easily see it, not from the, not from standing on land, but by going down by boat. The irony of it is that you can only get up there at high tide. Now, the slapoff is not gonna stop. This is a massive development. I'm not opposed to it, but it's in a residential district. And shoreline zoning, uh, it re, it really requires some thoughtful consideration. For this kind of development and, and this kind of different, uh, perhaps. Uh, forty years ago, when I was on the planning board, it should have been set up as a commercial zone, but it never was. I also documented erosion that happened this winter. And we all know when it was probably January tenth on two buildings that are. Southeast of this property that washed off their foundation. And one dock that is completely gone. Now, you could say that uh, the average high tide was eleven feet. Uh, didn't meet the fourteen foot. I don't, I, I didn't take any measurements, but I do know that two docks on the. Uh, eastern side of the hollow washed away. I'm talking about the walkways. I do know that a main pier down here was underwater. And uh. I'm not, I mean, I'm not wanna be an alarmist, but I'm totally convinced this isn't the last time. We've, we've seen anything like this. So. I would strongly recommend before any construction or development proceeds. That this whole shorefront be reinforced with granite or stone to prevent future. And that's my concern. That would be as, I, it's sure, it's gonna cost money. But it's a drop in the bucket compared to what else we're gonna be spending here. Thank you.
Greg?
Um, I, I guess um, there's more statements in there and questions, so I, I think I can let the board absorb it. There's no doubt that. Even here, there was much damage along the shore, boathouses and, and erosion. Um, I think the, the tackling of the shore is a different avenue, and in fact, a different application for the board. We've talked about it and when and how to do it. Um, it involves uh, not only the rock pits down below, but some other aspects of that that aren't really attached to this project. So sure, there is some erosion at the base of that shore. We get it. It's, it's been there before these storms. It's gotten worse there as, as it has for many of the properties along there. It's not a, uh, it's not a very. Um, esoteric or specific to this site. It's happens and we've talked about how to get down there and stabilize. It's just not part of. Uh, this vote is gonna be a different condition use with the planning board by the amount of fill. Um, same applications of um, NDEP, Army Corps, FEMA, there is a hierarchy of stuff that uh, happens that's a different.
So for the record, just to clarify, is if you were going to do shoreline stabilization, that would be a completely separate planning board application.
It's a different use. You have, you have a specific category for excavation fill that we've come before those. And it's a different set of standards that apply to them than the current application. Um, we don't disagree that some effort needs to be done down there. It's just a different application and there's a other uh, uh, staples in line that we can bind to make it a successful application to the board. So we don't, we don't argue the point, um, but it's also common to what we see.
Hey, ma'am?
Um, Pam and Dura, um, so on your thing, it says sixty-nine spaces required. And then greater than ninety-two spaces provided? They're saying that sixty-nine spaces would be required based on the calculation. They are gonna have ninety-two spaces, so they're more than. Right, because people are coming to the restaurant, if you don't find the trust of the restaurant or the spa and whatever. Um, can Peabody Road handle that? Because on a good day, I see people miss. Going around the berm, they come in this way. I see making the curve. We all had the MRI truck a few years ago. Um, the, like the whole intersection there to have. You know, sixty-nine cars or, or whatever, and then the people going into the Asta Kugardens from the hotel. It just seems like a lot could go wrong. And the road isn't really, is it gonna be repaved to accommodate all the extra cars? Is it? Is there gonna be a better pedestrian crossing? That whole wash down from, uh, what's that road called? Like at the herb when you go up?
The Ask, Asta Kuh Iltril.
That, that thing floods all the time and erodes there. So how are we supporting all these extra cars in every direction?
Greg, perhaps your traffic engineer would.
Sure, I think that's a, um, a, a Diane Morvito, uh, is with Seoul, um, but. Uh, also putting, just in context, hopefully it's in, sorry, kind of turn around so you can hear me. The main entrance is just becomes a drop off on that corner, so it's one way. So you can see at the corner at the ninety, and we've been out there with DOT to discuss uh, sort of those changes. And any of the uh, traffic entering is entering on the, the lower side. Um, further away from those corners, so that's an improvement. It's only one way in, where you can't come out and see left, we can approach from the corner. Um, regarding traffic and trip duration, it's a, I'd probably like to have Diane Morvito, she's on a Zoom. Uh, as a traffic engineer, who's kind of looked at what generations, what's the impacts and uh, maybe Diane could share a few. Bits of your information.
Yeah, sure. Um, Diane Morbiter from Seoul, the, Greg is right. This project is a big improvement in access management. Currently, there are four two-way curb cuts. That are gonna be reduced to three, and one of them will become one way. As it is now, there's a site distance restriction for that most easterly curb cut, and that will now be one way in, so that will be safe. Because currently, there was inadequate site distance to pull out there, um, and no longer will cars be exiting there. In terms of trip generation, um, we estimated based upon IT numbers. That we are looking at twenty-one to thirty-two one-way trips in peak hours. Um, depending upon which peak hour it is, the highest is Saturday. Where you have eighteen trips entering in an hour and fourteen exiting. And this was somewhat conservative, um, in that we used the IT hotel code. For the guest cottages and assumed two separate guest rooms, when in reality. Most of those cottages will be occupied by one family with one car. But the calculations were performed as if they were separate hotel rooms with separate cars. So these are high estimates. And that level of traffic typically does not have a big impact off-site on traffic operations. Typically, you need at least twenty-five cars in a lane in an hour to have any noticeable impact off-site on traffic. And this project has a maximum, like I said, of eighteen trips entering. And they're probably split between eastbound and westbound directions, so you know, certainly fewer than eighteen trips in an hour in a lane. I don't know if you wanna go into any more of the traffic, the safety review, or if you just wanna focus upon trip generation right now.
I just had a question, Diane, now that, that eighteen trips on entering that's spread over the, the peak period, what is that peaks period?
That's a Saturday peak hour. It's, it's usually midday on a Saturday when people are checking out and new people are checking in.
Ma'am.
Well, what about the restaurant?
But, and you gotta state your name just for the record again to.
I guess I'm a little confused about how you keep saying it's gonna only be one way enter and exit. Because I'm pretty sure that's technically how it already was. There was already, you pull in. So the first one and then it's the exit and people would just continue to not obey that and would go in either way. Like what's, what are your thoughts on how you're gonna prevent that happening when people come out of town? Don't know, like there was already an entrance and an exit sign. It was already one way, that little loop in front of the inn. And my second question about what you were just speaking about, Diane, when you're saying that, that. Road activity, are you just talking about the strip of road right in front of the hotel? Because it does kind of go up to that intersection where it connects to what, what is that Route one ninety-eight, where there's plenty of traffic that is not even at all. Or they just have to go and you, you can get pretty backed up with people turning right and turning left. So I guess that, like, is that, that road, is that intersection included at all in this?
Once you leave a site, you're, you're splitting your traffic, so not all the traffic from the inn. Is going to one ninety-eight, some are also gonna be going to and from the east. But again, that level of traffic, even if it all went to the one ninety-eight intersection, should not have a measurable impact, given the numbers. Typically, the capacity of a lane is like a thousand vehicles in an hour. So if you're talking about adding ten, it doesn't make a big difference.
Okay, and then what about?
Notice a change.
And then how are you gonna prevent people who miss the entrance like they do now? And they're like, oh crap, well, here's another entrance, and then they pull in to the exit and then it's all.
Probably talk about that, but I believe the entrances will be paved and there'll be pavement. Will it be one-way arrows as well as signage?
Greg, could you just point out for the record, where is the main entrance going to be? What's the primary entrance onto the property?
Well, the primary entrance is, is down here by, by closest here to the parking and normal desk. If you have to drop off um, for closing for lunch or what you do, you can make a. Right-hand turn in only and at this position of the site just you can both way and then come into the parking. So um, these are, this entrance is being limited. So if you're saying you missed, if you missed the end, you can go in twelve. But if you come this direction, this is marked, it's demarcated with materials and not an entrance. Um, this entrance can be used to get to the parking, but you can't pull off the entrance of it.
Got it. So again, all the exit is now the new entrance and all the entrance is now the new exit.
And this one, this one is eliminated, but you're not seeing as.
Pull out and go back in and you can't, we don't want that.
So we've eliminated this entrance. We could go in and out. This one becomes only one way for particular limits to be dropped off. Um, and so, and then this puts the main entrance further into the direction from the site distance. And this is positioned so you can see both.
Okay, and then I have one more question. I, I think it would be for the planning board, but like. At what point does an intersection become so busy that you have to put it in a traffic lane, like?
Yeah, I think that's a DOT question, um, Diane, could you maybe?
I can, um. We looked at traffic volumes. The daily traffic volume on PBD Drive. Is approximately four thousand vehicles and sixty five hundred in summer. Traffic signals are warranted based upon um average daily volumes, average conditions, not peak summer. So with a traffic volume of four thousand vehicles. You're looking at a peak hour flow. Of. Approximately four hundred. It's unlikely you would warrant a traffic signal. Um you you need pretty high volumes on. And on Route one ninety eight, your volumes are also less than four thousand. And again, in summer, they would be sixty five hundred or so. But that that level of traffic would not warrant a traffic signal.
Charlie, let that hurt. Uh I have a question with all the additional rooms. The sewer line and services for the town. It's been there for a long time, and I have no idea if it might look into additional capacity. Be required. Of that sewer line.
Could I respond to that, please? So the 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 first thing is that we we did look into that that line. And um. So. Much of it is PVC, uh pipe. It was worked on in the in the late eighties. Um there are private services which cross the property, which are old clay, cast iron. Uh we've inspected those. You can see through even from offsite, a lot of uh infiltrations. Uh from rainwater, people's basements are coming down through. So uh part of the project is that and um in tab, I'm gonna say it's tab six of the application. If the playing board wants to. Follow. Oh, actually, I'm gonna, um it's actually the supplemental submitted.
The letter.
The letter.
Mr. Hampton.
Uh David. June fifth. And so after we've looked at the lines and we traced the old lines. Uh we met with public works, where are the volumes and flows? And they have they have capacity um to handle it, and I can um. Paraphrase from. The public works um. In my opinion, that the estimated increase in the project will have no detrimental impact on the ability of the public sanitary sewer system. That's the work director after us. Bringing our flows. Sort of a condition on that at which the owner is committed to doing is we have to replace all the private sewers. That are coming through the site and changing the PVC. Uh and sealed, so they do not have infiltration on site. I don't know what that means. Offsite, I think the town is looking at infiltration and how to minimize. Impacts of treatment plan, but we've committed to doing that, and and that's part of the replacements of work.
Pam.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Scott. I think it's very exciting. You see the inn. Being refurbished, and what an amazing project. Hopefully, it will happen. One question, a lot of new employees. Will be working at the house to go in and. Working there in many ways. Where will they all be living? And. That's a lot. I don't know. Many people don't have cars, but shows transportation. And having asked, you know, people being able to get to work. I don't know how many people take to work there. I'm very impressed how a Claremont is from. I just go there, walk about twice a year and have an amazing dinner. I wish I could sit by this. But anyway, um. It's it's a huge influx. I don't really guess. Um and it helps the community to have. Selling things, found businesses are helped, but that's a lot of people working there, and I'm just interested in where they'll all be staying.
That's why I can um. So um there will be uh several employees. I think we had thirty or thirty six in the application, just to remind. Um they have multiple uh properties all over. NDI including Southwest Harbor and Barber. It's a challenge, but they have they have housing and neither they they have vehicles and vans and car carrying um. And that that is that's then. And they are, they have.
Catherine Madira, so are there the ninety two parking spots? Is that also for employees or do they have a separate?
Um so. No, that includes their lots. I mean, the town stands as a standard for hotel use, which. Hotel use includes your employees, your restaurant, your feeding. Which is a point seven five, because it takes into consideration your occupancy at the time for parking. And so the the town standard, which is applied to us, is. Twenty seven five um times your number of rooms to come up to sixty nine. And the amount they're providing is ninety two. So sure, some of that can be employees. They have parking. They have outing all over.
You gotta state your name again for the record, please, sorry.
Uh the inn. I I was, there's a total fifty rooms, is that correct? That it's on the map? Is that eighteen rooms in the inn? I was trying to just think of cottages. There's eighteen and eighteen plus fifteen. Is that about eighteen more in the inn? Or how many rooms will be in the inn is my question.
The inn has fifty rooms.
Oh, it has another fifty.
The inn has fifty.
Just fifty.
Just fifty.
In in.
In the main.
In the main building, there will be fifty rooms. So, okay.
That's what it has.
Oh, okay. Okay, it has fifty.
Fifteen, so there's fifteen cottages.
Fifty.
Fifteen in the inn, fifteen cottages. And eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Sweet, sweet, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then only if we're talking about the three yurts that are in there. Get deducted, so it's fifty existing, just as you would say.
And then a restaurant in the inn.
Correct.
I'm Eddie Scott. Um I I'm just asking. This picture. I I'm mostly over here on the town dock side. Looking over. Wondering what the view is going to be like. It 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 looks like. We we won't see. The eighteen rooms. That are in here, but that doesn't seem. Really realistic, is it? And 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 there's a there's a house here. Is that is that house owned by the uh this man?
We don't own the house there.
No, I don't think they do.
So so that house there.
There a house or is that just something? I don't think there's a house there.
It's a house. It's got two chimneys.
Yeah, that I would like that. It is a house. That's not.
Okay, okay, so that's not on the property.
No, there's a house here, and then there's another.
The these two.
Correct.
Right, so so those are part of the end.
They are, yeah.
Right, yeah. So when you look across from here, you're you're not. I only ask this because it seems quite unusual. You're gonna have rooms below the pool.
Well, underneath the pool.
Well, in the front of the pool. Do you have any any like what's it gonna look like when you look from?
You should be able to see there. You should be able to see the front of those. This, you can see that through there. They are there.
There there's the lower. You have the ones. It's hard to see.
So you'll you'll definitely see them when the leaves are off the trees.
Correct.
Off season, but you'll definitely see them, right?
I would say unless there's some other reason this.
And what what do they actually look like?
Uh elevations of the. But that's the children of the upper building. There was a stone veneer on the face of them. And then these are glass.
Like spied.
Yeah, and then there's there's a landscaping between the units.
Landscaping between you, so there's.
It's like it's like a little space, so there may be a screenshot between this unit and that unit.
Um you're sitting out on a terrace or not. That seems that. Oh, oh, so per terrace. Yes, and you protect the views.
So you have to look at your neighbor.
So so basically, you know, you might see it from the water or whatever. This dome. That's a big facade. So are so there's nine runs?
Yes.
And then nine runs?
Yes.
How long is that? They're on top.
Correct. Yeah. That's pretty amazing. Yeah.
Put this around. So this is the upper building. This is the lower building, so the lower building will have a green roof on it.
Yeah, the lower building has some green roof.
Yeah, the upper building will have to be the pool, that will be decking. There will be some greenery on that roof as well. Rick, you've got your hand up.
Rick Savage. Actually, I was so concerned about the shorefront that I really. Forgot about the parking. And the organization owns a building across. On Asta Kuhway, we call it the Brown House. There's a field behind it where. Turned into a parking lot. I know it was never commissioned or authorized to be. Parking. For the hotel workman or guests. In the summertime, it's jam-packed. Guys zooming around Asta Kuhway. Uh I think I'm correct in saying that the road is only a twelve foot right away. The upper part of the brown house is. Grown in now, so it's about eight feet wide. And uh I would be adamantly opposed to. Any associated parking. Uh in that area. First of all, it never should have been parking anyway, because I know two uh. Houses that have wells in that field. And access to it. Public, they don't have public water. Everybody has a well in that area. So. Again, it's another issue that it's across the street, directly across the street from. The hotel. And it's compound. And the road, the road in question is. Named Asta Kuhway. Definitely not suited for commercial activity or any increased traffic.
Yeah, with I. I'm very familiar with Asta Kuh. Way and Asta Kuh Trail and um. That's why we've made. So much additional parking on site above and beyond the standard. Um there's no plans for us to expand parking on that side. Um so for the record.
Any other hands? Public gum there.
Just one more question, I guess, but going back to, sorry, Catherine, I'm back to the left. Mr. Scott was just talking about on this rendering. Like, are these? It's like. Like he was saying, when you're looking at this, you can't really see any of the new rooms. Does that mean that they're not gonna have views? Like, it looks like you're planting a bunch of trees. Are they not?
Those are existing trees that are there.
So are the the rooms aren't gonna have any views of the water because they're gonna be blocked by trees?
There is, you can see through the trees.
Okay, so from the water in the summer, you won't really still be able to see all this. Words.
Me so, yeah, I mean, it's back to our evergreen and the city were spared. Um you can see through the trees that are there now. Those are down in seventy five foot. We're not planning to cut those um based on that thing. So, yeah, there'll be people who views both directions. There's there's no.
You also have pretty specific criteria for tree removal in the seventy five foot setback, so. Kim, te- technically, they they're not gonna be removing trees down in that zone, right? I mean. Yeah, I mean. So you're gonna you're gonna have vegetation in front of the in front of those. Those two structures.
Seventy five feet worth of there now.
Yeah.
Um Pam and you're up. Are we um? Are they gonna make new sidewalks or anything? Because? People are always scattered around the hotel or going down to the boat house. To get the picnic stuff or going. Across the street or just being confused. Is there new sidewalks on? Peabody Drive and it's.
Good question. Um so going back to our comment earlier about uh maybe with the sidewalk about new crosswalks. The crosswalks there now are right at the apex of the corner to get the best visibility. Um it crosses right on that ninety degree turn. Uh crosswalks and where they are, you can petition have new sidewalks. It's safer to have that crosswalk where it is. Um there are further crosswalks up till it's still here and down, so there's no plan for uh new crosswalk. Um however, we are um as part of that entrance, we have to close. Uh we have to continue to create new sidewalk through that areas, our condition with DOT. Right, what are you gonna do to the entrance? We're talking landscape and what it is, because it's really a low just. Black. Area, there's no definition of protection from pedestrians and traffic, and so that front of that area does get a new sidewalk. Um it's it's from the end. Sidewalks are uh sort of DOT and town integrated projects and extensions, we do have to put a new sidewalk. In front of in front of the end.
I'll go last.
They they found a way to make us give them a new sidewalk.
We've got two more hands, so. Go ahead, she had.
Yeah. Um now that, or Catherine Madira, um now that there's gonna be so many more. Units and people just on that lawn, is there any consideration of or any one concerned about a lot of trash that now might get? Left outside, get taken into the ocean. You know, this is a lot more. A-activity that's down closer to the water, and we get a lot of rains that could easily sweep stuff down into. The ocean. Is is that a concern at all?
You say trash like. Cups or.
Water bottle, plastic water bottles.
This developer is very conscious of maintaining their properties. I don't see that. Their staff is constantly out there. Well, at least I know at the Claremont, the staff's constantly out there, morning all day long, picking up, cleaning up, so. I don't see that as as something you're gonna see here. Yeah, Jack, the yeah, behind you.
Um Anne, I'm the resident of South West Harbor and a employee of the Claremont Hotel, and I said that they um help a couple of them. So one of the big things that Claremont offers our staff are bicycles. So we really do try to reduce um road traffic. I mean, we buy bicycles every year that we've been in uh operation so far. And so we make sure everyone who wants one has one. We put lessons on them. We take care of them. And so we help reduce traffic in our town in that way. Um and then there's a it's just kind of ongoing our care of our staff. And the property, so I know that will transfer to the Asta Kuh, and I can attest to that it's been very consistent. Uh for the whole time that the Claremont's been open and during construction, so. Any questions for that? I'm happy to help you answer.
Jack.
Jack. Let that hurt. Um with the cottages. That will be an asphalt. Road when we go down in front of the cottages. And there'll be quite a bit of runoff, and I see it here. There has been some consideration about runoff. All that going downhill has to be disposed of somewhere. We will find out.
So part of the uh the cottages, um they have a uh a reservoir drip line at the surface and it's a size. Fresh film, so load the drip edge. Say it's a twelve inch slot around each stone. Below that, it'd say it's a probably a fork that I have. Three inch deep um round stone reservoir. Then there's a um. Uh bark mulch sand filter, and from there, there's an underdrain, and so. Roof runoff directly from there is probably one of the low-impact development standards to stay using or use. In there, um settles through the skies in the storm, the bark mulch, um now it has microbial serum of any um sort of. In there, um, settles through the sides of the storm, the bark mulch, um, now it has microbial serum of any, um, sort of. Um, things that come off the reef, but it also, um, has mechanical properties to pull the, pull the asphalt particles or anything off. And, um, after that happens, um, if we go, the drainage garden invading the storm system with the alcohol, so. Pickle to the cottage, that's, that's the frequent plan for, uh, the cottages.
So, let me ask two questions, when you designed it, uh, the past couple of years, if you live here, you watch these rainstorms. Demolish trails in the park that's been there for seventy-five, eighty years, uh, what? Kind of a storm would you design for?
Uh, there's two different, well, there's multiple, um, aspects of it, so. For cleansing, you can't say for quality, you can't say we're gonna wait for the fifty year storm to do quality treatment. Quality treatment happens on a, a one and a two year basis for cleansing, so it's size on, and you look at, um, sizing of the storm vibes. To use the twenty-five year event, it was the benchmark, but we actually look at the hundred year now to make sure. The hundred gets where it's going, when the hundred overflows, you need to ensure that where that goes is hard escape. And so the way the road is designed, um, and you see at the bottom of the hill is there's basically a rain guard and it's under drain. And it's been designed at the hundred year event to get there, and, um, the region on the roads where it's at's hard escape, so you don't have that quick, quick runoff. So, you kinda gotta look at it in three different ways, you gotta look at qualitative, twenty-five year for certain sizing, and what happens in the suburbs, you hundred year that.
And where does the water effort filter, where does it wind up?
Uh, it has to wind up either, um, in a level spreader that can spread it out into a wooded buffer. Um, and eventually it's allowed to leave the site, it's on, it's on a slope after it's been detained to produce, uh, peak. Discarders, it's kind of let out over time, so that the discharge rates assimilate pre-developed flows. Um, after that, you would it buffers and then sheet flow, so it doesn't just jet right through, so normally if you had a ditch. And you just shoot that in the woods, it's gonna make the ditch in the woods. You take the ditch and you put it into a size sort of level spreader of, of round stone and, and what they call block spreader. It can spread out sheet flow and kind of reduce the loss, if you don't have, uh, 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 a fast loss in your vegetation.
Then there's a flat area for it to be.
There is, yep, and that, yep, and that, that.
If anybody has the, the application in front of them, it's tab nine is all about.
Yeah, so, yeah. In other words, it won't line up running into the harbors over.
So we're gonna, what are we gonna, it's gonna fall downhill, it's gonna get the harbor, but it has to go through mechanisms and design of those storm events. To repeat the quality and cleanse it, so, um, it all eventually makes there and, and in fact, your, your goal is really to. Any runoff, whether it's rain is to recharge the water table.
Yeah.
And then the water table is just exiting the bank and, and that, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, well, as Rick was saying earlier, there's already a lot of erosion down there from the streams that are there. Which is absolutely natural.
All right, any more hands? So, man.
Warren Willey from Somerville, I'm still puzzled about the housing issue. It was mentioned that there are a lot of houses, various places on the island to house workers, but. I thought we had a shortage of housing, is there like new something new being constructed to that?
Um, as the owner, um, I represent them, but, you know, we own multiple different properties.
And they're empty now?
Um, some of that capacity, correct, and looking at other things that won't be.
But you'll be buying housing.
We may, we may, we may expand, we're looking at that, but whatever the Ian is gonna need to help facilitate.
Well, I think it's a major concern for the island, if new housing isn't provided beyond what people are already occupied on.
Sure. Understood.
Okay. Man.
Valerie's. Um, were we gonna see the pictures that Rick mentioned and?
Right.
Took the email.
Thanks, thanks, so the prints of the pictures that, um, Mr. Savage took of the. A run and shore are up here on the table, and then they were submitted to Kim as well, so. If anybody would like to come up and look at the pictures, I can pass them around if you'd like to see them, um, they're here. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment. Everybody good with that? Anybody online, any questions? Now's the time.
Uh, just one.
Jack. Yeah.
Um, in what capacity are you suggesting keeping it open year round, the inn itself or just the restaurant?
We haven't, uh, we haven't figured that out yet, um, we've kind of kicked around just a, maybe a small portion, um, of the end or. Uh, for that, yeah.
Okay. Any last questions? All right, I'm gonna close the public comments and we're gonna get on to the review here of the application, so the. The, you know, of. I would, please.
I would move that we find the application is complete.
All right, all those in favor? I think the next motion could be relative to be using the short form, and I can reassure the public that just. By, because the board is using the short form checklist to review a conditional use application, does not mean that the review. The thoroughness of the review is compromised in any way, it's just a heck of a lot less paper, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, use a short form checklist.
I'll second that.
Right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Host, okay, we're using the short form checklist. Gail, you wanna make my favorite motion?
I hope we approve the application.
Second, yeah.
Okay, let's press the pause button and let's go through the review of the application. Right. We all have our application in front of us, we are going through section six, A, B and C. And section five point nine in the land use ordinance, um, following along on the checklist here along with the application. And. You know, let's, let's do this, so. Let me get all the pages aligned here.
I think a suggestion I've.
Yeah.
Found helpful, I mean, for the shopping pages.
Please.
Is, I did, I put the index up front. In a way to turn out, so you can follow without going back.
We'll solve, dude, uh. But I do wanna follow, we can actually application. Yeah, so I am on, your, your actual application is. Well, it's tab one.
Tab one, yeah.
And. You were kind enough to. Not duplicate each page three times.
I don't know, I think.
All right, I, I'm starting on page, page four of twenty-four on. Tab one, right, you, you guys all have section six, A, general performance standards. Open up here. And we've got the index here pulled out, and I got the checklist in front of me. Keep, keep flipping, go. Yeah, right, so that's your first page to go. Right, so, let's do it, so, here we are. Section six, standards for uses permits and approvals, we are in section six, A, general performance standards. And here we are at section six, A one compatibility, and let's, I'm gonna just follow through and. Read aloud the, the application, and so there are different criterias of compatibility. We have first physical size and they, African talks about that the main inn is approx- approximately fourteen thousand square feet. The two, the new two guest areas of the pool building are eleven thousand square feet and six thousand square feet. The physical size of improvements are not out of scale for structures on the site or localized large summer homes, which dot the waterfront. The cottages, they're approximately seven hundred square feet apiece, and they resemble smaller summer cottages. In adjacent lands, they're traditional of larger summer homes with smaller support guest cottages and staff facilities. And the outbuildings is a common vernacular of the development in northeast harbor. The architectural design of the guest rooms and layout is to mirror this form in the landscape. Another review criteria of, uh, compatibility is visual impact. African talks about that the pool building units are built in a landscape by stepping below grade with the pool terrace above area to minimize height and visual massing. The cottages are planned in an area greater than thirty feet below the sidewalk, and they don't rise up above the lan- landscape backdrop. The tr- traditional form of the inn dominates the site from offside, off-site perspectives. And the new improvements by visual scale and diminished in statute from the inn's presence in the backdrop. Now, the inn shall remain in its traditional view in size and scale. Another criteria we review is proximity to other structures, and the African talks about that the. Site plan demonstrates that the structures plan respect the principal structure setback in the V R three zone. The nearest structures on the east side of the project site are owned and operated as lodging units as part of the inn. Another favorite review criteria is density of development. The inn has not had any major renovations since construction in the nineteen hundreds, improvements were made in the nineteen seventies with. With the additions of the octagon yurts, uh, the zoning was changed by the town vote in twenty twenty. To a V R three allowing hotel use as a conforming use. The addition of thirty guest rooms over a fifty year, fifty-four year lifespan. Um, or year span is approximately a modest one point one percent annual growth. Go for it.
Anybody on the board knows my opinion about whether or not we should have six A one compatibility, but we do, so. Visual impact. Um, I noted that in the deed in, from Asta Kim, in. It says that with respect to the, the inn, any renovations or additions will respect the existing appearance. And the integrity of the inn. Um, I also noticed that, and that's, doesn't apply to the other, if that's, I read that as separate. But I'm using it as inspiration here, I don't think it's dispositive of the cott- what the cottages look like. I think the, the inn in the photograph looks very light, and that's because it's got a bright white light on it. But it's really gray. And I, and it's got a particular vernacular, it's got a particular roof line, um. Which I find to be quite different to my eye, uh, when you look at the cottages. Um, the cottages are white, and we all know that white is gonna, at least appears that they're gonna be white. Um, we all know that white is the very last thing you're gonna see at the end of the day as sun is setting and you're looking from the harbor up. Up onto that site, um, and the shape of those cottages are sort of what I think of as. I mean, I think if you apply to put cottages like that next to the Clermont, where Clermont looks right now, I would say it's right in. It just fits into the vernacular of the existing structure. I particularly, I'm particularly concerned about this because of how we can just see straight up the harbor. And I don't sense, when I look at the renderings, that those cottages look consistent. With the main inn, they, to me, they look like they could be a whole different establishment, and. So I think there are ways to mitigate that quite easily without having to redesign everything, and I'm not even sure that this is something that. Other people are particularly concerned about, but it struck me when I looked at it, it's like, well, those just look like a different project. And so I'm wondering if you could try to, you know, respond to that and tell me why I'm wrong.
Sure, we'll try, try, um, but I think if you, um, take the inn in its iconic state, there really isn't, um. Anything really right there, there's a, you look directly across the street, Asta Cool Way, there's a, there's a gable there. Um, in, even Asta Cool Trail, there's many smaller gables down along there, including the Blue Spruce. And so I don't think the intention is to compete or make it look like any, I think the inn speaks for itself, so I think that's part of the thought process of. And, and how they go, and, and I think when you look at the village as the whole, and you come to town, there's a lot of these little. High pitched, twelve pitch roofs. Decorative torches on the front, and I think in a holistic community, that was, that's the intent, and, and I think, uh. Contrary to that, a bunch of things that were more like the inn and not more like a neighborhood setting was the goal, uh, it may not be direct to that, but that, that's the intent. And, you know, in regards to the, the color and the backdrop and gray, um, the inn, unlike today. Um, has a lot of white trim and features when it's on the deck and that stuff, and so there are elements around there. Um, that I think kind of balance in, whether it's a bright white or darker gray that blends in, um. A little bit less dark, I think that's something we're, we're hearing feedback on and, and are considering hearing some of this the first time. But, um, so that's as, as far as I, I think I've been able to digest from what I've heard today.
Right, I think as evening sets, when you're down in the harbor and looking up towards that, they're gonna, they're gonna recede into the background a lot more quickly. If they're not white. But.
Yep.
I'm not sure I would deny an application for that, but I'm just saying that. That's starting, it's from, so thank you.
Just to add on the visual impact thread here, um, again, which is a review criteria compatibility. You know, you're, you are introducing a, 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 a new. Assembly of construction, which you really don't see in harbor, I mean, you're, you're creating. Fifteen structures of the same design and in a fairly concentrated area, and when you look. Stand back and look at the harbor, I mean, it's, it's, the harbor's got everything. It's such an eclectic mix of big and small and new and old and, like most harbors are, but. But now we're gonna have a concentration of buildings that are all similar. And we're, we've got fifteen of them, you know, in a grouping and just, you know, when I think about. You know, visual impact and compatibility, that's, that's in a, 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 an aesthetic. We don't have in harbor yet.
You're like in the end, so that I think are part of, we will be, there, there are some where we're mirroring each other, not all the same, you know. Cookie cutters around, some are flipped, um, and also landscaping, I think, is also gonna help with softening them. I mean, we don't want these to look all the same anyway, you know, with the window boxes in them, and there'll be site features that we do to them that, that kind of. Break up that similarity in them.
And, and it's not the, you know, I wanna clarify too, we're all very conscious on board that the, it's not the board's purview to reg- regulate aesthetics. Um, that's, every, everybody understands that here, but just, I'm gonna throw that out there, but.
We're also gonna have fences and harbors and stuff in the front of these cottages.
What happens if you had like three different cottage designs and you were kind of mixing it up a little? But I'll just leave it at that.
Considering of the different, um, locations of the dorms themselves and. We're looking at all those things to your client, um, and that hasn't been finalized yet.
Yeah, I think any. Yeah, I think anything like that would, would be a step in the right direction.
Now, I'm just gonna give a shout out to all those cool boys. But it looks like a stegosaurus on the last day. Maybe, anyway. I'm not a big coupon fan myself, especially if it's not useful. But again, that's, that's just me.
And part of the plan, just the background of compatibility and understanding that is that as you look down, um. And even during, the forest bends in and so the cottages were, are bow to chase that forest line behind. And particularly to, um, and you guys have it in, well, it's in the, um. June third, June fifth letter. They go into the forest and really the way they're staggered up there, they're not a bold front, right? So that the center has been opened up. And you'd see staggered edges of them. So they're not aligned on one starts to hide the percentage of the other. And that, that was through. Intentions, the renderings came about how the planning came from a lot. So I just wanted to, there's been conscious effort on sort of minimizing the impact by not giving. Uh, a straight wall of buildings that have the best views, right? And so the staggering of them is part of the planning. I just wanted to point that out. Um, sort of in the, in the rendering where from the side there.
I didn't see, sorry, I didn't see any apparent intention to maybe plant more trees or along that. That opening that's.
The, the, the main opening?
The opening. The opening where the cottages are on the shore. The opening on the shore, like you've got vegetation, vegetation, then you've got this big ball sport spot and then more vegetation.
See what we do is there.
And that's the existing opening. So your esterview, you're gonna see from the intersections up at the road. That's your part of view. But I think we can work trees in around the cottages too.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other comments on compatibility? Okay, so section six A one compatibility, I'm going to say C application. So six A two erosion and sedimentation control. You've got a whole tab on that, that's. Have four.
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah, okay. Let's say C application. Then we go on to and just. Yeah, and then, so in the application, the applicant is just referencing essentially what they have submitted and in half four. Um, six A three highway safety. The applicant talks about that the uh, main entrance has been modified to be one way. Uh, you know, this reduces conflicts and turning movements. The middle entrance is eliminated entirely. M D O T has reviewed the, improved the changes, uh. And uh, say that it does improve highway safety. The uh, traffic report is from prepared by the traffic engineer and it's part of the application. And that they talk about, there's a maximum of eighteen additional peak hour trips to the property from guests. They have sufficient off-street parking. Uh, and it exceeds the section sixty point two two requirements and point seven five spaces per guest room. Um, sixty nine required and we've got ninety two in total, uh, and the. You know, and they show on, on the submitted site plan, you know, how all the parking is laid out.
I'd like to talk about parking. Because the actual language of hotels and motels, which is on page six dash thirty two of our newso. Is adequate off-street parking shall be provided for all uses on the property. At a minimum, there should be no less than seventy point seventy five. Parking spaces for each hotel. So that's not, that's, that's not a fixed number, that's a minimum. And I am trying to figure out how this works. You have. You have, you will have employees. You have. Um, I'm sorry, a sixty nine. Um, you, you're in a ninety two spaces, I'd hope ninety two rooms, is that correct?
Oh, yes.
How many guests?
Yeah, two in bedroom.
So I don't know if there's any data that you have about prior uses of say the inn and how many people. Go to the inn and not have their own vehicle with them. I don't know if there's any experience that could help me with that. I, I know, I understand why you, you don't, we don't necessarily require. More. A, a one for one in every situation. I mean, if you're building a hotel in downtown Manhattan, you don't need a one for one parking situation. I don't know how many people will come to this inn and not be driving their own vehicles. And furthermore. You've got these cottages that have two separate bedrooms and two bathrooms. And I can well imagine couples, two couples, you know, family, related family members or friends. Meeting up there, both having their own vehicles. I don't know how often that happens. I know you have similar properties elsewhere with, oh, cottages, whether you have experience with that. Um, then you have a hotel open. I'm glad you're not gonna have large special events anymore. We talked about that on, on the site. But you have the, the restaurant, which is going to have the general public coming in. I think we can all agree that it doesn't make sense to rely on overflow parking along Peabody Drive. That's pretty dangerous. Um. But I haven't figured out the math with eight, with, with not, a total of ninety two and. There may be experience of running this in, in the past and other ends that helped me. Figure out why, cause I don't think we're, I don't, I don't think we have to say, oh, you've got point seven five, you're good. Cause that isn't what the ordinance says.
I think I answered the substance of that question. I disagree with you about, I think that uh. Ordinance provides a minimum standard that applies to all conditional use applications for this use. And I think the board has to apply that.
At a minimum, there shall be no less than point seven five parking spaces for each of.
Then you get into discretionary um, decisions by a planning board, which, as you know from your work, is a problem.
Well. But it gives discretion, it seems to me, based upon the circumstances. It says we have, we, we have to do, there has to be at least point seven five, but it doesn't say we can't require more. If the circumstances warrant. That's, I mean, I don't know how to, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, maybe I hear what you're saying, but.
We have maybe add to that, so uh, in the construction of that, the actual ordinance has a definition of hotels. And it provides for the accessories of restaurants, or it contemplated the exchange when it set that rate. Cause the residential hotel allows accessory uses and restaurants and public uses. However, I'm, I'm getting to your, your, your concern. So that level's there and I think that we, we haven't provided minimum. I think we, you're wondering. What is the adequate threshold? So we, we aren't at the minimum, we're at twenty, whatever, twenty three additional spaces than the minimum. And, and so that's, that's based on, um. A lot of metrics on how they function and when they're full and, um. If they don't have parking, they don't have guests, right? And there is no full parking. So, um, I think we're more than the minimum. And we provided twenty one in the minimum, the ordinance has a threshold. So I just wanted to point out, and we weren't, we didn't assume we were just at. We didn't assume we were just at the minimum, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to acknowledge.
No, I know that, yeah.
Global question here, um. Kim. In, in this zone, is parking and driveways counting towards total lock coverage?
Only in the shoreline, two fifty.
Only in the short, so, um. You know, so in the context of thinking about parking and as demands increase, I mean. Do you have additional? Area or uh, flexibility, flexibility to amend parking in the future? What happens if you needed another twenty spots?
Yeah, I, I think that there's a balance between making a property a parking lot. I think that the, the metrics is not meeting the minimum and again, more. Um, is there and, and again, having some people walk to their limits if they're concerned, so. Responsibility threshold is that they, there could be additional parking if it's necessary, um. Um, that didn't seem to fit the balance of what we are now considering, um. We know we have twenty extra um, in our operation.
Yeah, and, and I'm not getting into that. More parking solves parking. But I, I'm just trying to get a sense from the application that there's. Flexibility in, in, in the site design if, if flexibility were ever needed to be employed.
Yeah, because parking and drives are excluded outside the two.
Yeah.
Correct. And we're not against, it's fairly large parcel, so now.
Yeah, so, so some of your parking is counted towards law coverage and some of it isn't.
Although they're all good, good comments and uh, for hearing what you're saying, so. Um, they're targets, numerical and then some.
So as long as there's a specific brief comment about the subject matter we're reviewing, Rick.
Rick Savage, I'm, I'm sorry to, I know we're not supposed to speak. The parking issue is a huge concern with the added development. And I, they own a property on Asta who way that has been abused for parking already. The tiny road and the field out behind it has been abused totally. And they don't suggest that they're gonna use it. But they still own the property across the street and they haven't been, they've been abusing it for years. And I would like to see that address. Because that definitely is not commercial activity and it's all residential with children's year round housing. It's a twelve foot right of way that's actually grown in. I would like to hear a comment that they are not proposing to use the road on Asta who way.
And if, and if there was in, an issue with that, I would, I would understand that to be a code enforcement issue.
Like if you had concerns that somebody was using S U A as a parking lot, but it hasn't been. Approved by the code enforcement officer as a parking lot, then it seems to me that's an enforcement question to possibly.
I agree, but it's been abused as a parking lot for years.
By prior owners, let's just say.
That's what I wanted, thank you. That's what I wanted to point out to Mr. Savage, is that this is a, this is a new owner. Um, that, that, um, I hope the application shows plans to be a responsible steward of the property. It's not, it's not the same uh, ownership.
All right, any other highway?
I think I've done.
You're good, right? So highway safety, I'm going to say C application. Impact on town services. That is tab six. Also wanted to point out, we, we had the question about the sewer capacity and we got the letter from the. And from Brian Hinkle, the public works director, submitted. I'm going to say C application. Six A five land suitability. This is always a curious one, um, yeah. So the applicant talks about that they did do a geotechnical investigation. And um, it shows that it's, the site is sandy gravel with glacial tills. Uh, no bedrock was found at elevations in conflict with the proposed foundation or utilities. The soils are dense. And compacted similar structures existing onsite and adjacent provide evidence the soils are appropriate for proposed use. I'm going to say C application. Lighting outdoor. Six A six. Hey, what do you? Bottom of the page, right? You guys are using that eight point font, um. Site lighting is low voltage and LED lighting for safety and directional only. The inn is being retrofitted for fully. Fully shielded exterior lights, the lighting specs are dark sky compliant and photometrics. And showing extensive lighting and. That is all on tab eight. Yeah, I think our, you know, land use ordinance has a fantastically detailed and specific lighting ordinance. So, um, you know, I think if, you know, there's some incredibly guiding criteria there for, uh. The lighting design out, uh, afterwards, so I'm going to say C application. Six A seven stormwater. So stormwater. We're on tab nine. And the applicant talks about that, the, you know, we'd heard earlier, earlier about it too, that the. Stormwater management is accomplished through collection and treatment in buffers, rain gardens and pre- previously paved areas to filter. Most infiltration to mitigate negative effects from stormwater runoff. Buffer's to res- to resources remain in place and are demonstrated on the landscape and buffering plan. Stormwater report details those measures. We've got quite a bit of submittal on stormwater. So C application, vegetation, six A eight. Uh, applicant talks about that the property contains over nine hundred feet of road frontage. The in portion of the frontage accounts for three hundred and fifty feet of this frontage. Clearing for, for storm damage and access requirements through the permitted use of. The hotel is being applied for and is permissible. The landscape plan shows several, the trees in and along the road shall remain. No tree is planned to be removed for non-permitted uses. And that is all on tab ten. So C application. Dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. Apricots and says applicable standard met. Um, none of these admissions is planned as part of the project water truck to be used for dust. Control during construction, all restaurant operations shall meet state requirements for hood and grease control. So C application. So the findings back are that the findings of fact are presented by the applicant in attached application. And the conclusion was that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A. For which the standard has been met.
So.
Second. Right, all those in favor? Opposed. Section six B. And section six B is. A curious one too, because a lot of it is typically N A. So section six B one agriculture. Is N A. Six B seven excavation. So applicant talks about that excavation is only for the permitted use, erosion and sedimentation control. Is um, submitted and to be followed. So C application.
I interrupt just a second. I've got six B two, which is air landing sites and.
Yeah, you know.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they. Yes, the application says reserve. We don't need to do that. And so that, thanks for pointing out that our checklist does not follow the.
Know how it happens.
Application. So it jumps, our, our checklist then jumps from six B two to six B seven. And six B seven. And six B seven is about excavation and that is C application. And then six B eight is fences and walls. And what the application is talking about is that the fencing of utility areas, refuse and generators are provided. In less than six feet, uh, if it's less than six feet, the planning board does not have to review it. Landscape walls for erosion and grading controls are less than six feet in height, site walls are. Between the parking and access to the cottage. And. I mean, just. And that's tab seventeen, so. When C application. Sign regulations. Apron talks about that the inn's existing signage at the inn shall be used, the sign measures less than the thirty-two square foot. Limitation. So C application. Six B eighteen. You're not proposing a cell phone tower, are you? You're, no, you're not. So, N A. Animal husbandry two, six B nineteen. Is N A. Six B twenty. Are you having food trucks? N A, you're not. Six B twenty-one rooming house. Very specific use. There is none requested, so N A. Six B twenty-two. Hotels and motels, that's why you're here. Uh, so there's. Now, there's some. There's some wordage submitted for six B twenty-two and. You know, it includes all the owner's information, the boundary survey and tax maps, the landscape and site plans. Show existing or proposed elements, we've got the aerial and tax maps. Um, within two hundred feet, um, they talked about adequate off-street parking and referenced the point seven parking spaces. For hotel room and that they've exceeded that. Um. Where they've got ninety-two on site. Uh. And then the. You know, it goes on to talk about accessory dwelling units and you're not requesting any. And so. Six B twenty-two hotels and motels. That's curious, so on the checklist, it says. It says C notes below.
Yeah, I, I also just noticed that.
And then N A, and so I'm going to check the middle one. And I'm going to say C application. As we previously have. So the findings of fact from section six B. That the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B except for. Section six B seven, section six B eight, section six B sixteen. And section six B twenty-two. In conclusion laws, section six B is not applicable, applicable, except for. Section six B, six beats seven, six B eight, six B sixteen and six B twenty-two. For which the standard has been met.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? I opposed. There you go, so. Section six B, so moving on, section six C, we are on the shoreline zone, so. Shoreline zoning standards for review by the planning board. Uh, so let's do it, so. And if everybody got section six C open, one sixty-one. Sixty-one is agriculture, there's none requested, so N A. Sixty-two archaeological sites. And the applicant talks about that all the improvements are, are on the existing developed lawn and garden areas of the inn. Uh. A M H P C main historical preservation, yeah. Uh, correspondence has been provided as part of the applications, we've got that letter, so. C application, sixty-five essential services. Uh. Apron says that all utilities are upgraded and are planned as underground, and they say N A. Is that correct, Greg, N A?
Yes, only when you look at the definition, the senseless essential services, they're not considered service drops, they're service providers such as.
Got it. N A. Uh, parking area, section six C. Uh, applicant talks about that existing parking areas to the brook onsite is. Forty feet, new parking is set back more than fifty feet, all parking areas are graded to slope. Into the site and away from the stream runoff is collected. And treated internally to the site through rain gardens and previous pavement to encourage infiltration.
May I ask a question about that? There is, uh, obviously you need to have the planning board.
Or not, and not a waiver will make a finding that.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Um. And in your description in support of that, I think you commented that. One of the advantages of running the way you indicated you were going to is that it wasn't going to be, the roads weren't going to be sanded in the winter and salted, and so you weren't going to have any problems with. With that possible contaminant, but to today I'm hearing that you might actually be trying to operate. Some portion of the inn through the winter, so that actually might. Change. And you might actually be sand, in the sanding and salting business.
Yeah, it. So, um, from what's there now. The gravel which was closer than fifty sloped off to the street.
Yeah.
In this instance, the grainings picked up. And a curb line brought along the edge of that parking, all the way from the edge of the parking by where the comics containers were.
Yeah.
Along the entrance so that there's, there is, not only is there a barrier now between the edge of the parking and the brook. It's pulled back, it's sloped into the site. And not toes the brook, so it's, it's not going to break in the watershed. Um, and, and so. There's physically. Two means that it's not getting to the brook at that new location. By gravity and by the physical barrier, um, plus the implementation of all the best management practices that are described, so.
So is your understanding that this system that you're designing is capable of handling a wintertime? Run-off as well as a summertime runoff?
Yep, and, um. Yes, that is fact, and they, um. They use them, they have to be vacuumed, right, sand cars get in there, it's a larger aggregate.
Mm-hmm.
You, you have to maintain, you have to vacuum with the millions. They're going to be enough for the safe quarters. And. I think if you looked at the site plan, um. And some of the details we showed where that barrier is now heading the opposite direction, so.
Right, right, thank you.
So section sixty-six parking areas. C application. Sixty-seven is marine and freshwater structure standards, they're not proposing to build a pier, so. N A. Sixty-nine roads and driveways. Apron talks about that the access to the site follows the existing gravel access along the west edge of the site. Improvements to the drive area planned away from the front edge of gravel and stream on the west side of the property. That's. You know, that's, again, that's tab four. And fifty. So C application, sixty-eleven water quality. The, who, they, they've got the state well data and water supply data on tab sixteen. And the applicant says that no pollutants are discharged to any waters or streams, public sewers used. Runoff is treated to remove grit and promote infiltration. C application. So, the proposed. Use one clo- include none of the specific activities, and this is the findings of fact. The proposed useful include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six C except for. Sixty-two. Sixty-six. Sixty-nine and sixty-eleven. And conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for. Sixty-two, sixty-six, sixty-nine and sixty-eleven. To which the standard has been met.
I'm looking sixty-three.
Thanks, so, so move.
You can save that, yes. Right, so Tracy moved it, Alan seconded it, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Right, because we're in the shoreline zone, then we have to go through section five nine. Good, you didn't mark it all in A.
Very hard to type into the P D X or Word documents, I know how Tim feels.
Okay, let's do it, so section five nine, five nine one will maintain safe and helpful conditions. C application. Five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. C application. Five nine three will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. C application. Five nine four. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. C application. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. Apron says C application. Five nine six will protect archaeological and historic resources that's designated in the comp plan. Just kind of reviewed that too, so C application. Five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in a shoreline commercial district. Uh, that is N A because you're not in the Shawling commercial district. Uh, five ninety-eight will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. C application. And five nine nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, B and C. And applicant says standard met. The findings of fact are C above and. Conclusion laws, all requirements of section five nine have been met.
So move.
All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Okay, are there permit conditions on this? Kim, do you know of any?
Do we need to wave specifically with the provisions of? The, um. Parking sections will allow fifty feet building seven five. You, you think that has included implicit in that? Okay.
Okay, after our A track player. I'll press play and, uh, motion to approve the application as submitted. Or we have a motion, all those in favor of approving that application as submitted.
I.
I opposed. Congrats.
Thank you. I took that, a lot of the comments and feedback you heard from the board, um, are taken into consideration.
I. I know in the last ten years on the board, that is easily the biggest project board has reviewed, and I would say it's probably. The biggest project Northeast Harbor has seen, at least in nine thirty years here, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And I really like having this.
Yes, keep, keep doing that.
Would you like his?
A little vast here, but we do it.
No, there isn't any.
I like your screen saver. What? Yeah, we're, we're, just, we're signing this thing, so hold on a sec. Just the last one, you're the last one here, it goes back. Tracy puts it back into their original folder. So is there any of, any other tonight? Not hearing any other, other, or any other. Uh, then I guess we just need a motion to adjourn.
Tracy seconded. Let me just say we do that, that there is a loser meeting next week at five on Tuesday, you're all on.
All right.
Every, every third Tu- Tuesday, I believe, right?
Yes, yes, so we won't bore you with any. Comments about what happened there because we haven't been amused.
Right, any other further discussion? Right, none heard, all those in, uh, motion, a second. I.
Hammer time.
Yes.